I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, just these over here.
This is a presentation of the theater residency program presentation by Mrs.
Number two.
We're starting with the second one. This is Mrs. Schultz, Willie Wonka. Look, you look like, how could I mess that up? Okay, Mrs. Schultz, Willie Wonka Jr. presentation.
As with any theatrical production, there is always a glitch.
I think they have a costume in the back.
You look great. Your stars already have you in the stars.
So that was our McKenzie performers for the Willie Wonka Jr. will be at McKenzie tomorrow night at six o'clock and also on Saturday at 2:00 P.M. So both shows. So Mrs. Sarah Schultz, our music teacher, is also the director. So thank you all for coming out this evening. Also, we have Tanis Kowalczuk. Tanis is here with us. She is from Willow Whisk Organic Farm. And she has done for a number of years our Theater and Arts in Schools Program. And she's going to present what she's done this year with a couple of our students. So I have Tanis here with us.
Thank you, thank you for having me at your board meeting. And good evening, everybody. My name is Tanis Kowalczuk and I am a performer. I used to run NACL Theater just here in Highland Lake. And now I've started a new organization on our farm, Willow Whisk Organic Farm. It's called Farm Arts Collective. You can check us out on the web on that. But for the fourth year in a row, I've had the pleasure of coming in through a BOSI's program to teach theater in the classroom in collaboration with teachers, teaching the curriculum but using theater and playmaking and imagination and collaboration with the children so that they can learn their coursework in a different way. And it's been a really successful program. I have to say that I've had a lot of experiences teaching in other schools. And this school is particularly wonderful for me. I feel the students are really open and gentle and really nice to each other and to themselves. And they're really game. So since it's Valentine's Day, and I'm sure you're all thinking about love here at this board meeting, we're going to do a tragedy, the tragedy of Romeo and Juliet. So we have a lot of fun taking plays and taking novels, taking history, taking things as dry as the Constitution and making plays with them in the class. So today, the students, the honors class in eleventh grade, are going to present their version of Romeo and Juliet to you tonight. I think that should be okay there for now.
All right, I'll stand over here so I get to watch you.
Teenage love, so blind and so reckless, yet so passionate at the same time. This is the story of Romeo and Juliet, but not the one that you know. This is Romeo and Juliet in the 21st century, in a small town in New York known as Eldred.
Romeo, I think I've fallen in love with this girl named Juliet. She walked into my chem class and she lit up my world.
Paris, homie, bro, look, she's my lock screen on my phone. We've been together three months.
That's my girlfriend. But have you? I brought her home the other day and we went to dinner. That's disgusting.
How dare you steal my Juliet.
Romeo, having just committed murder, obviously fled the scene. Juliet, now wondering where her boyfriend went, is in a panic.
Romeo, Romeo, where art thou Romeo? What could he possibly be doing on Valentine's Day without me? Hey Siri, call Romeo.
What's up, good looking?
Hello, Romeo, where are you?
You know, I'm in the office with my big principal, his maxi.
What? Why are you in the office? Are you kidding me?
There's just a little altercation, like just a small fight, you know, it's good.
Yes, yes, what altercation?
Uh, you know, Paris, the one that was like in love with you or whatever, and when I got rid of them, stabbed and got expelled.
You, you what? You psychopath! I can't do this, I'm done, we're over, over, I can't live like this.
Oh my God.
Romeo now wander upstairs and discover this bloody scene.
Oh my God, oh my God. Juliet, I really didn't mean for this to happen. Paris, you just had to take my girl, sorry. I'll love you forever.
And thus is the tragedy of Romeo and Juliet.
Okay, go on with the rest of our thank you, Tanis, and that's part of the evening part. I mean, love Shakespeare as I do. Okay, so we are now up to different reports. Moving into tonight's superintendent's report, Dr. John Morgano.
I'm going to begin by asking Josh Glantz to make a statement. Josh and I met as representatives of the district and the Teachers Association. And we were able to come to an agreement, and Josh will explain.
Thank you.
It's Romeo and Juliet.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, I have a little statement to read. We partnered with the district in 2013 to provide financial relief when it was needed. We delayed our raises until February, and we still do in the current contract, saving the district money. We stand here before you today during another difficult period of time. We're still working creatively to partner with the district. And hopefully our collaborative efforts will help us all be successful. We met with Dr. Morgano. We agreed to help the district's fiscal distress. Currently, we're paying eight percent of our health insurance, moving to ten percent next year. Our recent fiscal problems led to pretty massive cuts last year. It's presented a challenge for education in our district. Our faculty has done our best to maintain program, educate our children. Our members have taken on more roles and extricure their duties to make certain we continue to provide a great educational experience to the students of Eldred. We're happy to be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Just note that the district appreciates your support and your cooperation. Some good news, there was school scene. There's copies of it in the back. It's a supplement to the Sullivan County Democrat. I think they did a great job covering the wonderful things that our kids do. And we appreciate that. I'm happy to announce tonight that we're going to be receiving $31,250 in each of two years from the Millennium Pipeline. And I want to thank Scott Hall for his work in facilitating that arrangement. Scott doesn't have to take credit for stuff. I want to talk about exceeding the cap. As you all know, we're asking for 4.95. I explained in the newsletter that I sent out recently what that would be spent on. And to summarize it quickly, it's two SROs. I think it's imperative that we have a school resource officer in this building and at the high school. There are times when it can take 20 minutes to a half an hour for a release to arrive. And in an emergency, that could result in a tragic consequence. So I think that's a worthwhile investment. Kindergarten teacher, as you know, we have to provide guidance services now to elementary students. And there's a need to hire at least a part-time guidance counselor. We need a special ed teacher. There was one that left last year we didn't replace. We have some needy students who either have to be placed at BOSI's, which would be a significant expense, or we can do it in-house for a fraction of the cost. And the state is mandating a data protection expert. We haven't defined quite what that looks like. But our children's data is very important. And it's imperative that it doesn't fall into the wrong hands. So the state is requiring that we have a data protection expert. And there will be a cost to that as well. That pretty much adds up to the $283,000 additional dollars that we're asking for. And I know there's a hit on the tax relief check. And Kaylee talked a little bit about that specifically. And it's not insignificant. Some people will stand to lose a check of $300, $200, and we're not dismissive of that. We're just saying that we've reached a junction in our school district where we need additional resources. And people may ask, well, when are you going to do that again? You're going to raise the cap in a couple of years again? We anticipate the need to do that maybe in 10 years plus. And in 10 years, it'll be a whole different crowd here. The problem with the 2% cap is that it's 2% or the CPI, whichever is less. So it's inherently built in that each year we'll move further behind. And it requires that about every 10 years, you need to catch up and exceed the cap. And we came up with 4.95% as a combination of what we think the community can pay and what we need. And as you can see, the money is pretty much all accounted for. And if we don't receive that, we can't do any of these things other than I will have to hire the special ed teacher and we'll have to figure out what we have to do to make that work. But we won't be able to have the SRO, the K teacher, or any other positions that I mentioned. Does the board have any questions? Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the district treasurer's report, preliminary budget presentation.
This has been adjusted so that I can keep it far away from my mouth as I'm used to doing. Okay, so what I'm going to tell you right now is, I can't stress this enough, it's a preliminary budget. It has our post-increases, it has a general outline of our budget. It has a revenue number and expense number, but there are still within the budget lines rules to move around. So not all of these numbers are completely set in stone. So of course, as Dr. Morgano had already mentioned, we're proposing a 4.95% tax increase that exceeds the cap, which is going to be 2.33% by 2.62%, which comes to a total of $516,237 in new revenue. And on the state aid portion of our revenue, we're looking at about a $27,052 increase that includes some decreases in the BOSI's aid, increases in foundation aid, and an increase in transportation aid based on our bus purchases. I'm under projecting this by the amount that the state is usually off. They're almost always off. Last year in April, they told me we were going to get $431,000 in transportation aid. That number came in at $400,000, but it was all said and done. And that's consistent with the state. They overpromised and you don't tend to get exactly what they tell you in April. Other revenues, we're expecting a decrease of $68,000. This is mostly, I have not budgeted in any bullet aid as I have no guarantee bullet aid from either the Assemblywoman or the Senator at this time. Last year, we had budgeted $100,000, we actually ended up getting $130,000. So that worked out in our progress meeting with the Assemblywoman last year. Oh yeah, we'll still be trying to get more aid, but I'm not putting it into this preliminary budget because I have no guarantee. This is money that I am assuming I will need to have. I have zero dollar use of reserve or fund balance. Last year, we had $100,000 use in reserve. That was for the unemployment and for any retirement incentives that were being offered. So the total revenue budget comes to $17,273,770. Now that's an increase of 2.52%, of 425.60, which this will add up to. Now, people have asked me why if we're raising taxes 4.95% of the budget only going up 2.52%. Well, taxes are only 60% of the budget. And the rest of the budget is remaining either flat or coming in under what we had received last year. So overall spending should be around 2.52% higher. These figures are for preliminary, New York State law, it goes out April 1st. There'll be no use of unencumbered fund balance. I have no major equipment sales plan. That was something that had increased our reserves last year. And the property tax increased. Okay, so on the school taxes. After the tax increase, we will still have the second and third lowest rates in the county respectively. Currently, we have the two lowest rates in the county behind only the town of Delamere and Sullivan West, which is at $14 for a thousand. And there are only about 1,000 parcels there. So there's maybe 1,000 families out of 20,000 families that have lower taxes than here. These upcoming charts are going to detail the tax effect and what that might look like on individuals in varying levels of home values and income. It does not include the effects of a compressor station, which has not yet been assessed. If it gets assessed anywhere where the rumors were being talked about, this could have zero effect on people's taxes. In fact, it could lower their taxes even after a 4.95% increase. But I could not include that in there because I don't know what that number is at the moment. I should know at some point in March. But until I get that number, I don't like to. Well, no, before the final budget. And we'll know it before board votes on a budget. So at the second budget presentation, we should have that. So currently, if you live in the town of Highland, your tax increase should run about $76 for a $100,000 home, $152 for the year for a $200,000 home, and $227 for a $300,000 home. And I also put down for months so people could see what kind of effect it might have on your escrow.
So the increase that you're projecting there is for the entire year?
This is for the entire year. This is broken out by month. And this does not include the effects of the compressor station. I break this down to zero, and hopefully I'll have those numbers by the next quarter. The town of Overland is almost identical to Highland. Change this from year to year based on home hits and car taxes. But negligible amounts. In the town of Deer Park, we're looking at higher raises. But something that is important for people to understand in Deer Park is that Deer Park and the town of Tustin do not assess the value of the properties at 100%. So what that means is, let's say you have a $100,000 property and you live in Highland, your taxable assessed value is $100,000. If you live in Deer Park and your home is worth $100,000, your taxable assessed value could be in the $50,000 to $60,000 range. So the equalization rate, which brings these numbers up, is meant to, the equalizer that's happening is to equalize with towns that are 100% assessed value. So while this looks quite high, when they say $300,000 assessed value is $8,600 compared to $4,900 in Highland, really this is closer to a $500,000 house. Whereas the one in Highland is actually a $300,000 house. I'm not claiming that the equalization rates are perfect or that every house is affected the same way. But it is important to notice that this does not mean that it's, it's not access to oranges. Tustin is very similar to Deer Park in its increases with the $300,000 assessed value being $423 for the year. What people do stand to lose, this is only for one year, is the property tax relief credit. And we do understand that can be substantial. And that is based on income less than it is property value. So if you were on enhanced star, these are the amounts that you would stand to lose depending on the town that you live in. It's 34% of the enhanced star amount is what you get for that. Doesn't matter what you're covering. And then with the highest being Deer Park, you would use $474 if you were making $75,000 or less. That is household income, that is not a single person. So if one of you makes $40,000 and your spouse makes $36,000, you're over $75,000. So you'd be surprised that most houses fall into that range. So you're looking at most houses between $246 and $257. The bulk of our residents, we have roughly 5,400 parcels. 5250 or more are in Highland alone. There's 118 parcels in Tustin and 38 in Deer Park. So the vast majority of the residents are in this area. As far as state aid and how that was calculated this year, there was an increase in foundation aid and transportation aid. That was due to the bus lease. We had a decrease in transportation aid reimbursement rates, that went 45, 38%. And that was due to higher assessed values, lower enrollment and lower attendance. A combination of the three. The net effect was that there was a smaller increase in aid of $27,000. As far as other revenue, I expect our pilots to increase. I did include the $31,000 gift from the Millennium Pipeline. I expect an increase in interest income, near $12,000 to $20,000. We're going to join either night class or night laugh, which is a mutual bond type program. We expect to get around 2% on our money given that. I do not have any known bullet aid from the state yet. That does not mean we're not going to go ahead and ask. We are. I'm very confident that we will get it. But we have it so far in budgeting a net decrease of $68,000 of the mislegitimate revenue. As far as budget expense highlights. In our general support salaries, now this is like our administrative, there are only contractual increases budgeted. There is no increase budgeted for the superintendent. And there are no administrative staff that I budgeted above 2%. That doesn't mean that's what we're getting raise wise. It's just what I'm putting in preliminary or contractual amounts. Things that I'm not willing to raise. On the general support other, our expenses are only increasing 1.8%. That includes a $30,000 roof repair, which is necessary for GRM over the summer, and $45,000 for the high school laptop program for ceiling and restructuring the laptop here. All other supplies and contractual expenses were held flat. Energy costs are expected to be consistent with the prior years. Actually, our fuel oil bid already came in and we should be paying lower amounts for fuel next year, which is consistent across the country, most gas prices are down. On the instructional salaries, we added a special education teacher and kindergarten teacher. Added two days of guidance counseling for BOSI's. An increase remaining salary to 2.72%, which is a contractual amount for the teacher's contract. I also reconfigured salaries, you'll see on there between the high school and the elementary school to better reflect our new staffing. That was really just, you'll see, $300,000 switch between the two of them. That's just a switch in staffing. We added two SROs into the other expenses. That's under the instructional contractual number. And all other expenses were held flat. The total instructional increase is 4.35%. You'll know that almost all new spending is in instructional with a minor increase in general support and no increase as we see next in transportation. So we focused, most of our, almost all of our spending on instructional. Transportation salaries increased by 2.72% as per contract. The transportation expenses are at neutral for this year. We got lower bids for our diesel fuel this year. So we're going to be paying less fuel or buzzle. Our bus lease does not go up. Our garage lease is not going up. And we're exploring a cheaper lease for our radio. So I do not expect transportation costs to go up. I also do not expect our debt service to go up. There should be about $30,000 less than prior year. On employee benefits, we have looked out so far. I don't have a fine look on this either. My health insurance premiums are anticipated to be around 5% or less. Doesn't sound great, but for health insurance, that's a win. A reduction in TRS anticipated for next year. The range declined by the state as they expect eight and a half to nine and a half percent salaries. Last year was around 9.6. I'm using 9.5. When they get me to a range and they say it could be 9.5, you gotta go with 9.5. Overall, our expenditures are slated to increase by $425,120 altogether. That's a 2.52% increase over last year.
So that actual increase is reflected in exceeding the cap? So that they balance out?
Yes, that's correct. So the 2.52% is the increase in the total budget over last year's budget. So the two point five two percent is the increase in the total budget over last year's budget. So understanding that the four point nine five percent is only increasing sixty percent of the budget, thirty-five percent of the budget, which is our state aid, went up close to zero percent, and then the other five percent went down. So the net average is out to two point five two percent. You always have to start with the revenue, but never quit.
The eighty thousand dollar decrease in revenues, what is that attributable to?
It is one hundred percent attributable to bullet aid. Last year, I budgeted one hundred thousand dollars in bullet aid for the evening country because I knew I was getting that. This year, well, I'm confident we're going to get some bullet aid. I don't have a number, and I don't have a written letter of intent, so.
And there are other people that we can ask the government for money, sometimes we get some.
By the next presentation, we should add more information.
I don't know if this is the place for it, but the cost for the SROs is a flat amount in budget.
Yeah, it is seventy thousand dollars for each SRO.
And that is paid to the sheriff's department, who then takes care of the benefits and all of those other things.
Yeah, the cost is about ninety thousand, the county increases up twenty thousand, which is why the county legislature should ask you to approve them.
Okay, is that going to be a problem? I believe we're the only school in Sullivan County without SROs.
Oh, so does.
And so those resource officers will be armed, and that is something that may have different feelings out there as it does even up here on the board. But giving up multiple times and having fully trained and responsible people with guns is the goal, as opposed to trying to arm anyone in the schools.
The new legislation on gun control eliminated the possibility of wanting to acquire security.
So before we can decide, they decide.
Yes, they do.
So this is the round that we feel we need to go. In this day and age, if you have more questions about the SRO Act or anything, at the end of the presentations here from the reports from all of us, you'll have a chance to come up to the podium, use the microphone, ask questions or make a comment. What we will ask tonight, that we not have a discussion, in other words, no one from the audience should engage someone who's speaking or commenting, and we will not engage in a conversation or back and forth. We need to get your comments, we need to receive them from as many people as possible, and certainly we'll try to answer any questions or write them down for next time. But we will not have a discussion, so please don't call out from the audience. Just come to the microphone when you get your chance, okay? Do you have any more to go? Do you have any questions, any other questions for Caleb? Caleb, thank you, that was, that was, I mean, very helpful for me and hopefully for everybody else. I know it's harder for them to be able to read those small, the small print. Well, yes, it's gotta be really big, that's the trouble, it's so big that you can't get it on the page. But yes, next time, that will be. Okay. Next is my report, and I have to say that I have. I have been challenged by this position for a very long time, well, not this position for a long time, but being on this board for a long time, and this position as president, and I am letting the public know at this point that I will not run for office again. There are three open positions, and right now, there are, we don't know who's running, but I want to let you know early on that I will not be running. I put in ten years, they were very educational and very life-changing for me. I feel like the district is in a good place, even though I understand that financially we're making decisions right now that will decide if it's in a good place. But I feel like we have great leadership. I really appreciate Dr. Morgano and Caleb for all that you've done and all that you've enabled us to do as a board by your expertise and by how much you care about this district. And when I heard Tanis talk about our children, how she's worked in many schools, but our children are the kindest, I mean, that practically, that practically brings tears to my eyes, because if we want anything for our children in this world, it's to be the kindest and the gentlest and the best people, and to have people who meet them say, wow, Eldred's kids. So pat yourself on the back if you had anything to do with that, and I think you all did, but I also feel like this board did. So it is with regret, but also with satisfaction that I end my term at the end of this fiscal year in July. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have now the elementary principals' report.
Good evening. So I'll speak loud so you can hear me. Our Super Bowl week took place. We collected over one thousand donations that really affected our kids in our backpack program right here at Genze. So even though the junior, senior high school collected, they went right to the community and out through our building here, and I really appreciate both the junior, senior high school and all the parents and kids and staff members that donated to support the kids here through our backpack program. It's a great program. We're able to provide donations to kids and families to help them get through a weekend. I don't know the specific numbers, but that was one of the things that I always talk about in the past, and in the beginning, this is when we come to one of the board meetings and address our backpack program. The, we had two, we had a number of participants, but we have two that are moving on in the spelling bee. Marissa Gotchanauer in fifth grade and Connor White in sixth grade will be moving on to the next level in our spelling bee. Mrs. Van Hagen is here, and she was voted Teacher of the Year. So I'm not sure if that paper is in the stands, but it's due out this week, I believe. So it'll be in the best of eighteen, nineteen issue. So we thank them and everybody that put forth, and it's a pleasure to work with Mrs. Van Hagen here. And I know that many of our students have had Mrs. Van Hagen as a teacher throughout the number of years that she's been here, and she will be here for many more. So upcoming, we have February twenty-sixth, we will do a CBT, that's computer-based test. We'll do a simulation here at the elementary school for three through six, and then the high school will do seven and eight. And on March fifth, we'll do a CBT statewide simulation on math. So the first day will be a DLA, second day will be a math, and it's pretty much a time that we can have everybody test about it at the same time to make sure that our network is prepared, our features are prepared, and the kids are prepared. So when we have the state assessments coming up, we'll be all online and have a set routine that we can do.
And will we then be prepared for computer-based testing this year?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
And it's important that we prepare because the regions are all going to be on the computer in the very near future.
That's the next step, I believe, after, yeah, they're talking around twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Once the pre-grade, they're going to move on to the state assessments and regions being computer-based.
So then as we stand right now, we can talk about this at a later time, but as far as our material and supplies go, as far as our equipment goes, are we ready for?
We are this year. I'm prepared.
Okay.
All right. I love to hear that. We're prepared. March fourth through sixth, we have, how in the district newsletter, on the website, et cetera, our pre-K and kindergarten will have open registration. So if you have a pre-Ker or kindergartner coming here, that'll be March fourth through eighth. So hopefully come April, we'll have a tentative number of the number of families that have signed up for both those programs for next year. And March sixth, our fifth grade will have their DARE graduation here at nine AM. So you're all welcome to attend that. I think invitations are going out to the parents of the fifth graders as part of the DARE program. PTA events, we have on February twenty-sixth, the Assembly called RAP, Realize Anything Is Possible. And on March ninth, our PTA Someone's Special Dance will be taking place for our students in grades three through six, and they bring an adult, a special adult with them for the PTA event for that. And that's all I have to share with you this evening.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Any questions?
Any questions?
Sorry, I want to mention that.
Okay. So part of, Ailey Gunther gave us some bullet aid this year, and we use some of the money, as you know, for an outside area laptop. Just recently, we laminated half, for whatever reason, half the windows on that side have a laminate on them. These they're coming back for in the next week or two. They laminated with a 3M product that is able to withstand any type of wind gust so that the window does not shatter, but it kind of like protrudes in, like if you put a plastic wrap over your windows in the wintertime and air comes through.
It'll venge you.
Yeah, similar to what those would do. We're looking at doing more, hopefully, with any more bullet money that we get. This was phase one of some of those things along with some of the other safety things we talked about with our locks and our buzzers and our alarms on the doors, to try to do our best to keep kids safe here at Genze. They did some of those same type of laminates at the junior, senior high school. So we kind of set up on phase one and phase two and maybe phase three if we get more money as the years go on.
Thank you.
They did a great job.
Yeah, glad we had that. Again, that's a safety issue, that's one more thing that we can rest easy about. Okay, and then we have our high school principals' report.
Thank you. We are in the last stages of fundraising for our students who are going on their Washington trip. If you love Krispy Kreme, please come to the high school. They will be glad to sell them to you. We are very pleased to report that Vicky Casey's English eleven honors class sat for their eleventh year Regents exam in January, a half a year early. Everyone passed the Regents, and thirty percent of, I'm sorry, thirty-five percent of the students received mastery, which means they scored at eighty-five or above. If you have an eleventh grader that took honors, they're very tired, and be nice to them, okay? It's really hard. Our zoology class recently had a visit from the National Park Service, and last week, we finally got the right day weather-wise, and they went on their annual eagle launch and saw thirty eagles, which it was our lucky day, so Miss Stringer tells me. There are identified twenty-two or eleven pairs of eagles that they know about over the river, but there were thirty, and she swears they didn't count them twice. Our school district is extremely well-represented at the Sullivan All County Music Festival, which is occurring the first two days, Friday and Saturday in March. We have eight of our students in grade seven, five through seven, who are in our middle school, are in the All County Middle School band. We have eight students who are in the junior high All County band. We have, and this is incredible, we have four of our students who are in the high school jazz ensemble, and all four of them are playing lead instrument in their section. It just doesn't happen like that. We have two students in the middle school string orchestra. We have one student in our senior high women's chorus, and we have one student in senior high mixed chorus. So Eldred has twenty-two of his students, which is a tremendously high percentage countywide, that will be performing, and if you don't, if you really want a great experience, please go, it's fantastic. We've had a couple of more college acceptancees, besides the colleges I mentioned last month. We also have sentences at SUNY Buffalo and at North Carolina State. Smart girl, wants to be in the warm climate. And in March, we have our Career Pathways Fair. It is on Friday, March fifteenth, from nine AM to four PM in our gymnasium. It is both for our parents and for our students. Dr. Morgano worked closely with two gentlemen who are very active in the union trades in our area, and along with Ms. Grant, we will have a large number of representatives from the unions who will be in the building all day to give kids the opportunity to see another piece of what's available to them after graduation. And if you happened to catch the article in Today's Record about the fact that this area of state is desperate for apprenticeships, we just don't have a lot of our students who are going into apprentice programs, which do lead to very well-paying jobs. Our tenth grade, all of our tenth grade students visited OCSE's VOTEC on Wednesday, got an opportunity to look at the programs that we know they'll be signing up for. We have a huge group of juniors and seniors now at VOTEC, and we're very proud of that. Our January Regents are over Dunbar. We had forty-four students sit for the state Regents exams in January, including Vicky's class. Forty-five percent of the kids that sat for the Regents passed it, plus Vicky's thirty percent. And we have about twenty-five percent who will, and this is about right, who will, they have time to sit for the Regents exam again if they need to in June. And we, I'm sorry to name the names, we have several kids who are having their art display at SUNY. And, ah, one more thing, our Advanced Placement results, which come very late to us, from last year's AP, Advanced Placement American History. As you know, AP courses are graded zero to five, five being the highest, and they designate a five as well-qualified, which is a gross understatement. These takes a lot. A four is qualified, et cetera, et cetera. We had ten students last year who sat for the Advanced Placement in U.S. history. We had one of our students receive a five, we had two receive fours, three received threes, one received a two, and two received a one. We are above the national average for three and above. At about, national average is a little under fifty percent that score three and above, and our students in Mrs. Osens's class, it was, it's about fifty-two. and our students in Mrs. Osens' class, it was, it's about 52%. So, and these are very definitely college-level courses, and Mary Kate and her students in the Social Studies Department should be congratulated for that.
Okay, very good. Oh, okay, Hannah Jennings now report for us for the student report.
So I guess I'll just go in like some sort of...
Without you now.
Sorry, is it on?
Speak.
Okay. So recently, the varsity girls basketball team were league champs over Livingston Manor. Individual wrestling, Nicholas Carreri was one first place at the Section Nine Championship. Will be competing again Friday, 22nd of February, at Times Union Center in Albany for the state championship. Joseph Carreri won third place at the Section Nine Championship. Today, there was a mentor-mentee event for Valentine's Day that took place. TRAP goes to their Section Nine Championship this Saturday at West Point. Also this Saturday, the seniors will be having a student-run day sale outside of PEX to help fundraise for our overnight trip to Austin. And I'm not positive on the date, but someone can correct me if I'm wrong. The Global Fair is going up, and I believe the date is March 5th for when it'll be held. So, oh, also, recently, we had, the National Honor Society held a blood drive, and I was there for some time, and it was really nice to see a lot of the community out donating their blood. So thank you for anyone that showed up. And we're gonna be having another one, I think, in May, so if anyone wants to donate, it's a good cause, so you should come out. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I wanna, I wanna give a hand to the Carreri boys and also to our girls, or I mean, our TRAP tape for section, going to Section Nine, so let's give them a hand. All right, we've come to our comment and question time. If you would like to speak, please feel free. Limit yourselves to the consent agenda and what you've heard so far, and please come up to the podium and use the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin from Eldred. It's okay if you can't answer it now, but I'm just curious if you guys can confirm what exactly a school resource officer is and what their responsibilities will be throughout the day.
A school resource officer would be from the Sheriff's Department, and their primary responsibility would be to patrol the building and be there if, in the event of an occurrence, if somebody breaking in, somebody with a gun. They are not here to supervise kids or to be in the cafeteria. They're here in it for an emergency, to protect the students. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think we can, yes. Okay, there you go.
Um, I have a question. For the school resource officer, and I commend that. I do believe, when we were at the safety meeting last time discussing that, I was one of the ones that brought up the discussion about how long the response time would take if there was a catastrophe at the school. So I commend the school for that, I must say, that number one. Number two is, I believe it was Caleb that said that the law was passed, that you couldn't arm security guards, am I correct?
I said that.
Okay. I would just like to, I mean, you can fact-check me, but I was able to Google it online where the law does not say that. The law says that you cannot arm teachers, that anybody other than security or a law enforcement officer can be armed. So as much as I commend, I do believe we do need armed security. I 1,000,000% agree with that. But in hindsight, with the school's fiscal problems, paying $140,000 for SROs versus paying an increase, maybe $10,000 for a security officer to be armed, I think that could be better spent in that area if that could be researched. That's just my opinion in order to help out with that area.
I'll double-check on it, but I was sure from the answer I got from Bosse Superintendent and from my inquiries of the state, but I'll double-check it. Our two private security guards cost us about, is it 45 each?
Yeah.
About 90,000 altogether, and the SROs, which would be trained police officers, would be 140.
Okay. Like I said, I commend it, but if there are...
Personally, I'd rather have trained police officers than private security with a gun. But, and we, and we had that discussion when we had our committee meeting.
Anybody that we chose to arm would need extensive training in order to be able to carry a gun in a school. So we would be paying for all of that as well, and the ongoing, because there's ongoing training, it's not just once. So that would all be included. And when they cost us 45, does that include benefits, or do they get benefits, sir?
It's, uh, we pay a company contract.
Yes, oh, that's right, to the security.
So we pay a rate per hour for having them here.
Okay, thank you.
And just one other thing, and then I'll sit down. But is it, am I correct if I'm wrong, aren't the security guards that we have now ex-police officers? Or is one of them that I know that is an ex-police officer? So if that person was a police officer, serve and protect, he walked around the beat with an armed gun, I feel that person, I would trust that person in my childhood school. He is an ex-police officer. So isn't that the equivalent of the same thing that you're already looking at? That person would need any extra training?
There's ongoing training because of crisis in schools. But, but you're right, absolutely, they would have more authority to carry a gun.
Yes. That's all I mean.
There's states involved, you know, different, New York and Pennsylvania, things like that. But you're absolutely right, and, and we have looked at both options and feel that the community in general would be more confident with SROs.
And I'll have to check about the security being armed. I was, I'll get back to you. I know where to reach you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How are you all? Good way. Happy to be back. First of all, I have one question on the agenda. That would be six...
Here's the mic.
Got it?
No, the other way. Say, yeah, say who and where, please.
Yes, my name is Paul Clark. I'm from Lumberlin.
I'm from Lumberlin.
I'm an ex-board member here at Eldred. I currently am the community member to the Audit Committee at Eldred. I've been there for five years now. I've got all my audit reports from the past five years. Prior to that, I was looking into the money situation at Eldred. Former superintendent before, when I asked for a copy of the audit, told me to foil it. So I did foil it. I found the audit reports here.
Put the mic up.
I found the audit reports now since 2007. I have one general question on the agenda, and that is 6.06. Teacher mentors, is that something that's already in the contract? Is that something that has to go into the contract? And is that going to cost us additional money? You want to speak to the judge?
It's in the contract. It was made into that state law, put in the contract, and I think it will start around 2010.
And is it being funded currently?
Yes.
Second of all, I have some questions for Caleb. Do you want me to ask them now, or would you prefer that I ask them at the end of the program? On the second...
If it's related to the budget that he just presented, certainly.
Okay, yes, it is related to the budget. I, coming back from the South, I reviewed the board meeting minutes. There was a parent that was asking about the fund balance and how a fund balance is created. Now, Dr. Morgana said you cannot have a fund balance created specifically, which means you can't have a planned balance. Is that correct?
That is correct, you can allocate funds for a fund balance.
Okay, so you can't be a budget line for fund balance.
For unappropriated fund balance. You can make a budget line for a reserve.
Okay. So how then do you create the fund balance?
Well, you have to budget for your worst possible, and then you should try your best not to spend that much money.
Okay, so you can either inadvertently understate revenues.
Yes.
Or inadvertently overstate expenses.
Correct.
Okay.
Or, or intentionally overstate expenses so that you have some level of cushion in there. For instance, I have a student that I was quoted for placement that they said it could cost between 140 and 211. I budgeted 211. Comes out to be 140, I have $71,000 in my fund balance.
And I've always been a money manager, and I believe in cushion. One of the problems here at Eldred is, can we protect the cushion if we have a cushion? Now, at the last meeting, you stated that there was a $5 million fund balance at Eldred in 2010, 2011, and that $4 million of that was used for something, and we've now down to 1 million something fund balance.
Yes.
How do you protect that fund balance?
Don't spend it.
Don't spend it. Are there any laws or anything that prohibit a board from spending that money? That, that's a lot of money there that belonged to the people in the school district, and they don't know what it was spent on. They just know that it's gone, and now they have to replace it. Is there a state law that would prohibit that from happening? Dr. Morgana, perhaps you'd like to answer that?
I think the money was spent on operating a school district. The, there was a give-back of money, and then the 2% tax cap came into being. That's my understanding. And the district wasn't able to recover that money. And each year, rather than raising taxes as much as they should have been raised, they used the fund balance to offset the tax rate. And now there's no more fund balance.
One of the reasons tax cap was created was to give people more control over their school spending. So if you're using money that the public is not seeing in the budget, then...
Well, the public enjoyed having fewer taxes for a number of years than they would have had had the money not been spent from the fund balance.
I think the public would have enjoyed having the use of that $4,000 seven years ago when they could have used it to lit the airway.
I mean, I've made no bones about the fact that the money was spent and shouldn't have been spent from the fund balance. It's in the newspaper yesterday, it's in my budget newsletter. I think we have to go forward, and I think the plan we have in place brings us moving forward. And we can blame the past as much as we want, it's not gonna change the future. The only thing that's gonna change the future is taking definitive action now.
Okay, I agree with that, and I, I don't believe, it's been my record that for 30 years I've worked hard to keep the students first and keep the taxpayers informed so that they would continue to support the students. And I think that is going to become increasingly more difficult. Now, when I was on the school board before, I was a lobbyist for New York State School Boards. I was a lobbyist for Solon County School Boards. I worked with Senator Charles Cook to come up with a STAR program, which was a program that was going to put more money in schools because it was gonna lower people's taxes. So I'm, I'm, I'm not a babe in the woods. I know more about school financing than probably anybody in this room. So here's the deal. As we move forward, and we get these houses filled up and older preserved, and we get the houses and the houses are being built, one thing's gonna happen is, we're, our taxes, our tax assessments are going to increase. It's gonna be more assessable property. As that happens, and if you're losing students at the same time, Caleb, what does that, this is state aid for me?
It's going to continually decrease.
Continually decrease. So we're at a point now where I think we have to make a decision on how we're gonna get the best education for our students. And I don't believe that that's gonna happen by putting more money into the system. I think we need to maybe look outside the box a little bit. Now, Dr. Morgana, you talked about not saving much money if we close a school. I think you talked about half a million, is that correct?
I'm not sure what the figure was, but we can't close this school. We've done an analysis of moving all of these kids into high school, junior high, they don't fit. And that's with making classrooms in rooms that have no windows. Caleb's office would be a classroom. We're a number of classrooms, six at least, short. Besides, I don't think it's a good idea to put the little ones with the big ones, but they don't fit. We tried tuitioning them out, we did that analysis. Would cost more, about $300,000 more because of increased need for transportation. And I happen to think we have a great school district, and I don't want to fragment it and have it be destroyed. We're gonna lose 70 kids over 10 years, that's not a reason to close a building.
Well, I happen to believe we have a great school district also, and I was part of that. I was here when...
Well, it, it is a rich history here.
I was here when enrollment increased by 21% between 90 and 98. So I know what this school district does. I have two sons graduated from here. I know what kind of education they got. I'm not gonna argue about taking a school board district apart. I'm gonna argue about reserving this school district. This is for questions.
Thank you.
This is discussions.
Yeah, we're not discussing.
Back and forth, we're not here to discuss, this is for questions. Let me ask you another question.
Well, maybe you should give someone else a turn and then do some more later, how's that? Because you've been up there quite a while.
Okay, that's fine, my mouth's a little bit dry.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, I was here a Saturday. We had one guest come, Mrs. Wade came, and we spent three hours here on a Saturday. And I'll do an evening, me and a couple of board members and Caleb. Anybody has any questions, we can have a different kind of discussion in that forum.
And your questions might be more appropriate there.
And we can have a more lengthy discussion.
Because you can have a back and forth at that point.
Who hears the questions and the answers?
Excuse me?
Who hears the questions and the answers?
Me, a couple of board members, and Caleb, and whoever else comes.
You dropped your pen.
You dropped your pen. Bring whoever you want.
Not my pen.
Not your pen?
Nope.
So one thing that I just wanna point out is that we have looked extensively at any other option than keeping the two schools open and running and growing to the best of our ability. It would cost us more. Monticello pays higher taxes than we do. Sullivan West pays higher taxes than we do. Port Davis pays higher taxes than we do. If we tuitioned out our children, we'd be paying their tax rates, and we'd still have to bus them, and we'd still have responsibility for all of our special education needs, and our taxes would have to cover that as well because we wouldn't get, the state aid would go to the places where the children are tuitioned out. There is no benefit... There is no benefit. So anybody that mentions that out there, would you please tell them it's not viable? It's not going to work and it's been discussed over and over again. Please get over the fact that we might close and save money because there is no way that's going to happen. These are our kids and we educate them well. And I want to see that continue. And I think, thank you. And looking forward and not back. If we're going to have houses being built and businesses coming in that are paying their fair share of taxes, that should bring with them children as well. And so we can grow. The county might grow. We're all hoping for that around here. But it's not just Eldred that's losing kids right now. We have to make do and make it so attractive that they come to Eldred to educate their kids. Okay?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Just to piggyback what Carol said about if our students go to a different district, that we don't get the state aid. That's true. Teaching in Monticello, we lost a few students and we're, they're choosing to build a private school very soon. And if we lose the students to them, the private school gets the state aid. It comes out of Monticello. So that's what we're discussing now in our district meetings. So I just want you to know that if the students leave and they're bussed out, we don't get that as state aid towards our taxes. And that's something that people need to know, that we'll be paying for them to be tuitioned out. We'll be paying for the transportation and the state aid is going to go to the school that they go to. And I think that's a misconception that is being put out there.
We're still in question and answer or comment? Is there anybody else before we move on? And please say who you are and where you're from, Mr. Cherry.
My name is Craig Cherry. I'm from Glenstine. First of all, I got to commend you for the work you're doing for this budget. I think it's admirable. My daughter went to school here many years ago. I was part of the groundwork or the fever, the passion at the time to build this school. It was a particular elementary school. Our kids were being farmed across the river at that time. That was something we never wanted to live again. And I just want to make a point that the worst possible thing anyone could ever discuss is closing up this school. That's just unfathomable to me.
Absolutely.
My daughter graduated a long time ago. She got a great education here. She's now an attorney up in Albany. And we have a lot of parents here the same way. Their kids have gotten a great education here. I've gotten to know a lot of the school teachers here over the years my daughter was here. They do a great job. And to start going down that road of wanting to disband our school district is just terrible. I'm to the point now, yeah, I'm getting my senior years now. I don't want to pay more taxes either, but we will destroy our community. We'll destroy the value of our homes. We will not grasp the opportunities that the county is now starting to prosper on out there with people wanting to move here. Just a bad decision. And I thank you for your effort in that regard and making sure that we stay grounded here in Eldred. It's very important. One other comment about the school resource officer. I spent a year in a career of law enforcement and you cannot beat the services of the school resource officer. They do more than just hire a hired gun. They provide a network. They speak to the students. They get to know them. Somebody they can confide into, come up to them if they have a problem at home or in the school. They relate to the kids. It goes far beyond just having a hired gun. And I also sat on the Safe Schools Committee here back after Columbine. We did draft up some emergency response plans. And I know and respect the understanding of wanting to have a secure school. And if you go outside of having a school resource officer, you're not going to get the security you deserve. You are correct. New York State law prohibits anyone other than a police officer to carry a firearm on a school property. And there was a special exemption for superintendents to try to maybe make a special disposition to someone to do so. But that is going to be repealed by the governor. That is a factual statement that you made. That is going to happen with the new legislation of safe schools. And the governor's going to bring that up. There's no question about that. And you do not, one more last thing. You do not want to take on the responsibility of maintaining the training of an armed security officer. The liability is way past what you'd ever want to do. They require to have annual training of everything from disarming people, mental health laws, everything. A whole gamut of training that you would not want to take as a school district. Leave that to the sheriff. I'm sure he'll work out the best possible deal for you. He has with the other school districts. And I just want to make that comment and say thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions.
Name and location.
Chuck Hoffman, town of Tustin.
Chuck?
Yes.
Hi, Chuck.
I do have a couple of questions. And I want to start with the tax bills that were not issued.
The taxes?
The tax bills. And the...
That hasn't been on the agenda or...
Well, I don't see anything in the budget about changing vendors who produces the tax bills.
We are going to change vendors.
It is.
Oh, yeah, we were. Oh, yeah.
It was quite a disaster.
Disaster.
Wasn't it again too for the town?
It was twice.
Yeah, they did for the town.
Twice in the past two years or three years.
But then...
The county's changing vendors, right?
Yeah, the county wasn't particularly thrilled.
There is no way we're staying with that vendor.
Okay, that's important. And it also took four months to get the refund back from the school.
I do apologize for that. We had to manually do them after we did 11:30. We closed taxes later, so I got them out. It was December 22nd.
I appreciate that. I do appreciate all the...
I do apologize for that.
...material that has gone into preparing the budget. But I am concerned when I view this, and being a resident of Tustin, that my taxes are going to go up 13.3%. Not 4.95, but 13.3%. When you look at the dollar value. It's not yet, I noticed you had it broke down nicely, $30 a month. But when you look at it over the period of time, it turns out to be almost 13.3%.
It should come to 4.95. Let me see here. Yeah, that should come out to about 5%. Going from 8,500 to 89, that's $423 a year.
You take 30, multiply it times 12.
It's 423. I have the yearly up there.
It's 423. On top of what I already played, which is going to put this on top of it, it's going to push it to almost $4,000 a year.
Oh, no, 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 that's...
Just school taxes.
No, 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 this is, that 423 is for somebody who's paying 8,532.
And I, when I'm looking at this, a town of Tustin is...
Okay, so I tell you what. Let's take this to Caleb. You and Caleb look at that paper after because it looks like a discussion. And I don't want us to get into discussions at this point.
Well, that's a value of $250,000. You're doing $200,000, $23.50 a month times 12. That becomes annual then. But still, the taxes are approaching upon $4,000 a year. And you talk about apples and oranges. They use the equalization rate to make them balance.
Yes.
Not right. And when you disingenuously say apples and oranges, that's not true. The equalization rate is to make it more fair. The thing is that over two years ago, the town of Highland lowered the property tax rates and the town of Tustin and Deer Park had to make up your fund balance difference. In addition to that, do you recall? So here we're going on top of that two years ago. Now you're taking it up another 13.3% for me.
No, it should...
Chuck, this is a discussion that is not appropriate for now.
I know you don't want to hear the...
No, I don't need to hear it right now. You need to sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's interesting. I will discuss afterwards.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, we are moving on to minutes and warrants. I need a motion. We are all the way through. Let's see, how far does this go? 4.01 through 702. Take a moment if you wish. Then I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent injunction.
Thank you. I'm voting?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I say yes.
Yes.
Mr. Amador?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We have five. And so that is passed. Seven, okay, 801 is next.
Approved.
No, we just did that. Okay, so we are up to old business. Number nine, is there any old business? Is there any new business?
I just, I would like to put out again that if you have a student that has graduated from Eldred or a Sullivan County School District, I do write an article for the Sullivan County Democrat and I would love to interview them. I can show you the articles that I've written so far. They have been getting a lot, a lot of interviews and would love to feature more students from Eldred. Thank you.
Okay, we have two motions that are walk-on motions. The first one is the Millennium Pipeline. Being resolved, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education's approval of the following donation for the current year or fiscal year 2019. Appropriation will be amended to permit the expenditure process. Further, be it resolved that the donation of $31,250 to Eldred Central School District each year over the next two years is from the Millennium Pipeline Company LLC.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, may I ask for a vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I say yes, yes. Okay, thank you very much. And a second walk-on motion is faculty association benefits that you heard of from Mr. Blance, be it resolved between Eldred Central School District and the Eldred Central School District Faculty Association. Whereas the district and the association are co-signatories to a collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2016, through July 30, 2021. Health insurance shall be paid by the district according to the following. This is for all active employee coverage. 2018-19, 92%. 2019-20, 90%. And 2020-21 and thereafter, 90%. Further, be it resolved that the parties agree to make retiree health benefits a mandatory part of the next contract negotiations.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Voting? I say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. We are up to any other new business from the board? Okay, then it is with great pleasure that I invite you up for a second public comment. Anybody who would like to make comments or questions is welcome to come to the podium.
Susan Wade.
Yeah, there's a button.
Susan Wade, Highlandburg. I was reviewing the budget information, comparing it to a study that had been done back in the fall. And what jumped out to me, well, first of all, comparing the revenue that the study presented compared to what the budget presents, obviously is all the lower because his recommended increase was higher. But what concerns me is that in 2022 and 2023, the study suggested increases in taxes that had to be over the tax cap. They were 5.9% and 6.5%. And I'm concerned about the statements being made that the tax cap should be busted about every 10 years compared to a study that everybody kind of embraced, saying that the tax cap must be, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like it's going to, the consultant was suggesting a bust of three times within five years. So I'd just kind of like to get some kind of explanation on that, either here or off. I have.
We can look into it certainly.
It's a very, very...
Very different, yes.
Caleb, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So that was actually where the one error had been. So he ran three different scenarios through his study. And in the one scenario, we did the cuts.
Yes.
And the other scenario, we just did the tax increases.
Yes.
And then the other scenario, we did both. In the scenario where we ran both, he had, in the Excel spreadsheet, because we were playing with numbers that day, he had put in the cuts for the first year and then did not include the effect of the cuts on the next years. So he had a formula there that showed that we needed to both, needed to do both in order to become fiscally sustainable, which...
No, I have to disagree with you because the...
Okay, this is where I want the conversation to, you know, not be a discussion.
Okay.
So you can, you know, if you have another question, you want to leave it as a question, that's good. Caleb's available 24/7.
That's a very big difference and it needs to be addressed.
It does need to be addressed.
It needs to be addressed publicly.
Okay, all right, and that's fine. We can get a more comprehensive answer for the next board meeting then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Praise?
I'll card once again and try to stick to comments. My name is on the plaque out there on this school district.
I know.
I sat through that whole process. There were a lot of options. We actually got to the point where we had to vote to consolidate with Narisburg. Narisburg voted yes, but we're voting no. I sat on the fourth school study with Jeff, DV, Narisburg and Eldred. There were a lot of options then. There are a lot of options now. If you go and you break the tax cap, there are going to be consequences to that that these students are going to suffer from. And if you vote to break that tax cap now, who is voting on it? Two board members. There's only two board members left after this year. These people are being disenfranchised from being represented as to what their future wants to be because it's being made by you and her and her. And you may not...
And him and him.
And they're valid. They're here after July. They're going to deal with whatever it is.
But we're making these decisions now and the public gets to vote. That's the point.
The public gets to vote for?
For the budget and exceeding the cap.
So they vote for the budget? And what do they have to do if they're not happy? They vote the board members down?
Sure.
There's only two valid board members sitting here. The others are lame ducks. You're taking...
That's an inappropriate statement.
I, this is not a discussion. Your comment hopefully is...
Save it for Facebook.
Well, you know, partly if you told me you don't do Facebook.
Right.
I read your comments.
We do not do Facebook. Thank you very much.
Do these people, many of them who are parents, do they have any input into what happens with a school district in the years ago?
Could you please stand if you feel like you have input into this board? What it does, what we need from you? If you have a chance to speak, do we listen? Have you impacted us in the past or in the future? Is this your school district? And do you care what happens to your kids? You elected us. Thank you very much for standing. I appreciate you.
All right, is there anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for this enthusiastic group. I appreciate it in every way. I need a motion to go into... I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
And it is for, what motion? Contract negotiations. We will not be doing business upon our return. Thank you. A motion I can second.
I second.
And I need a vote.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you.